Hi, Mike.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, so the connection application.
So there's actually going to be two of these. We have two new homes coming in. They're both modulators, but still, there's two new properties that will be built on. One is 99 North Street, and one is 12 Oak Street. And these are the applications for, basically for them to hook up to the water system. You will have the same thing in the sewer department, but right now, this is water only. But, so yeah, so we have two new homes. They are asking to hook to the municipal water system, and as water commissioners, they're required to get a permit approved by you.
We don't see many of these in Proctor.
No, we have two of them this year. So I will tell you that our system capacity is fine. Adding two new accounts to the system is not going to cause any issues with permitting or anything that we do. We have plenty of system capacity at this point.
Motion to approve the water connection permit.
Okay, for both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Permit applications are approved for 99 North Street and 12 Oak Street. The request for interest abatement on 56 Chatterton Park.
So as you'll see, there's a duplicate of this in the sewer, under the sewer portion of this. But we have some people in town that bought a house a year ago, and something happened, and they didn't get their bills, and they didn't decide to look to pay their bills and whatever. But we did, in fact, see that the bills had been sent to the previous owner, and somehow it never got forwarded to them. So they are asking that the water commissioners basically forgive, abate, whatever word you want to use, the interest that has been charged on their account. You'll see that on the next page. Starting on October 19 up until current, it's a charge of $55.18 that you would be forgiving if you chose to forgive the interest on this account.
So are we just approving the water and not the sewer?
The sewer is separate since you're not sewer commissioners at this point.
Okay, so you want it to be separate?
Yeah, there's duplicate forms. The same stuff is in there under the sewer. You'll just have to go through the same motions then. But this is for wa- this is just for the water right now.
Okay.
So they aren't looking to cancel the water bill, just the interest, correct?
Correct, correct.
Just the $55.18?
$55.18.
Right. To approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a no.
You're a no?
I'm a no.
Okay.
Greg, that the address has been straightened out, the owner's name, whatever was in error.
Yes. It wasn't actually an error on our part. It was really more of a timing issue. The bills went out whenever it was with the owner, and they claimed that they never got bills, but we showed that the records, they should have gotten a bill, whether they did or not, I don't know. But when I talked to Celia, she said yes, that it is all figured out. It's all changed and will be correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other new or old business underwater commissioners? Okay, is there a motion to go out of water commissioners and into sewage commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Hail in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have the same, the connection applications, but for sewage this time.
Right.
For 99 North Street and 12 Oak Street.
Right, and same thing. We have capacity, our plant capacity is a lot more than where we're currently at. It'll be a while before we ever meet that capacity, if we ever meet it.
Motion to approve the connection for 99 North Street and 12 Oak Street to the sewer system.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hey, the request for interest abatement now on the sewage bill.
Motion to-
Correct, so it's the same as before. The total on that is $41.40.
Motion to approve, Bruce, you said?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a no. I'm a no.
Okay. Any other new or old business under sewage?
Um, no, I'll cover little things in my report when we get there.
Okay.
You'll cover the lagoon, how we're doing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to go out of sewage and back to the regular select board meeting.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Standing committees, I know the rink had a meeting last week, which I wasn't able to go to. I don't know if you were, you went to it or not, Greg?
I did.
Okay.
Um, trying to think what they discussed. They talked about the Mortimer Proctor grant, which will be coming up soon for the presentation for that. They needed a couple of small things. They needed some smoke detectors, which they were going to just go purchase, and then they'll get reimbursed for. And then we talked about the pool. It's, again, that's in my report, but the pool has closed. The 21st was the last day for the pool. That's been shut down for a year. I think that's really it. The church has actually done a couple services out at the rink, and they seem to be going okay. I think they're doing one this weekend as well, but those seem to be going just fine.
Now, they're probably, this is probably their last weekend, right? Wasn't it through August? Or?
It was, it was, yeah, it was, it's kind of been weekly almost. They haven't used it every single weekend. I think they have for like the last three weekends.
Okay.
But they can use it as long as they need to. They're just paying $100 each time. And as long as we're able to get there and sanitize and, you know, do what we do, it's not a huge issue. So they, it's really been sort of a week-to-week thing because they're looking for, I think, more permanent venue.
Okay. I do think the permit itself, though, had specific dates on it.
Yeah, it did. I'll have to look. I think it might have been through August.
Yeah, I thought.
They have to do, if they choose to do more, we'll just, you know, give them to another-
Right. I think it'll scree me eventually when it gets really cold up.
A few of us did some work on the carriage trail this Sunday, and we met at the rink. The service is well attended. I was amazed.
That's good.
Did they have a tent up?
Pardon me?
Or did they have a tent?
Nope, they were just out on the rink.
Because they were, they had talked about getting a tent, but I think they're really looking for a permanent, more permanent venue.
I did talk to Joel, and he said they weren't looking for one. It is getting colder.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, a few more weeks, and then they would have to find something. So I wouldn't be surprised if he extends a little bit longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have Beaver Pond committee?
Committee meeting is next week?
How about, are they meeting in Rutland yet at all, or by Zoom for any of the?
I think it should start in September. It's usually two months off. There is a, I have a county solid waste district meeting coming up next Wednesday. It's always Monday.
Okay.
So I should have something on that next meeting.
Okay. Bruce, how about you? Any of committee meetings?
Uh, both Tom and I had a problem getting into the Zoom meeting for the mosquito district, and it must have been something erratic that happened. But hopefully, I'll, we'll have a copy of the minutes probably for our next meeting.
Okay. Are they done spraying now?
Pardon me?
Are they done spraying for the season?
Uh, I don't know. As I say, we tried to get into the meeting, and somehow the, it didn't like the password that we were putting in. I tried it on my, my phone and the Chromebook, and neither one of them. And Tom tried too, and we didn't have any success, so.
Okay.
I'll have to wait till we see copies of the, or draft of the minutes.
Okay. All right, so no other reports?
The planning commission will be meeting in September. We didn't-
Okay. Right. September is the month. All right. Okay, review the bills and sign the orders. Any questions on any of the billings?
You're doing a great job, Judy.
Huh?
You're doing a great job. Yeah.
What I do best, especially when it's not coming out of my checkbook. All right. So there's a motion to approve the bills. I'll come in and sign them. You won't be there tomorrow, Greg?
No, but I have everything that needs to be signed. It's ready to go.
All right, I'll stop in this week.
And carry those copies of the, uh, payments, those are available also.
Yeah. Rhoda has the bills, because I looked at the bills today. It's just easier for me to look at them physically than it is to go through and roll. So I looked at all of them.
All right.
But you'll need to sign all of the water and sewer permits and everything too, so there's a stack of things to-
Okay. All right. Okay, Sheriff Department report.
So this is August, starting August 1st through the 21st.
I thought the officer did well at the dog hearing. He seemed to be sharpening on the ball.
Yes.
Has it, what's the, that's not on here anywhere else, is it? What's the status of that? I sent him up the letter and-
My internet is super weak here, so I'm only getting part of it. But yes, I think you asked about the letter. So it was sent out the following day after you all reviewed it. It was sent out certified like it's supposed to. And then all the other people that were involved got regular mail letters as well.
Okay.
And then, so the sheriff has it as well, and they'll be doing, processing the tickets and the fines and all that.
Okay, and then next week, we should probably go over to his yard and check out his fencing.
Yeah, and I already did. I actually took pictures of it too, and I didn't see anything wrong with it at all.
Okay.
I think the gate was left wide open, which is probably what happened. But we can always go back and look, but it was in really good shape today. I went out last week.
All right.
Did you have a chance to ask the Sheriff's Department about back to school, or to talk to them about back to school?
I have, yes. And I got an email back that I need to forward to you from the Sheriff's Box, saying that that would be fine. Just let them know when. So when I get back on Wednesday, I'll make sure I forward that or move that on to him so that he knows what hours we're looking for.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Managers report.
So just quickly, I've got just a couple items here I wanted to just touch bases on. So the Beaver Pond Trail is moving forward still. As part of the process, there is a, another, uh, public meeting that's required, and they're looking at doing a virtual public meeting to meet these requirements. It's tentatively set for September 21st, but I will let you know when we get closer if that's actually going to be the case or not. But that'll be just a, an opportunity for the public to see the, kind of see the almost-finished progress, or the almost-finished, um, design concept for this. We've been going back and forth about some crosswalk issues, and I think we've got it figured out, so. But September 21st is when we're looking at doing a virtual public meeting for that. The chipper, we purchased the chipper. It is at the shop now, and they will be hopefully using that pretty soon. It's not a real robust-looking thing, but they claim that it'll do five-inch twigs or sticks. So we'll be getting that out on the tractor soon and get some of the branches ground up.
So those will be like cleared up by Beaver Pond?
Well, yeah, we were going to let the Beaver Pond people use that as well, and we'll probably just bring our truck out or something, and they can chip it into the truck, or whatever we decide, or whatever works best. But yes, they've already asked, even before we bought it, they were asking about it. So that was the idea, was to do our own thing and then let them have a whack at it.
Okay.
We plan on doing that this coming Saturday, and John does know that.
Okay.
So he said, I had a question. Are you, you're talking about the bike path, right? The Beaver Pond Trail?
Yes.
The bike path, okay.
Yeah, it's a shared, yeah, it's a shared-use path, bikes and pedestrians and all that. Yes, yes. Um, the lagoon liners for Tom. So what the original idea was, from my understanding, I talked with Dan and I talked with Harry out there, and the repairs that were needed were these larger areas that needed to be repaired. And we weren't necessarily looking at a full liner replacement, which is what I understood that we were doing. That's not the case. That is going to be super, super expensive to do because you'll have to, you'll have to drain those down, get rid of the sludge, and then put a whole new liners. It's probably a million-dollar project. So Harry made some additional calls to some of these liner people, and they actually said what they would recommend, because this is sort of a 10-year type of a thing, because we're going to have to budget for the long-term liner replacement. What they recommended we do is use that, that paint-on stuff that they have as seen-on-TV stuff that you put on your roof. I can't remember what the name of it's called, but you've seen it on TV. It's a rubberize, it's a liquid rubber, basically, that when it goes on, it hardens up, and it's, will hold up to UV. They claim it holds up to UV. So that's what they recommended that Harry put on these patches, these large patches. So that's what he's done. He went to the store and bought some of this stuff, and it was, I don't know, like $200 or something like that, and that's what they'd used to fix the liners temporarily. So we've basically bought ourselves seven to 10, 12 years, somewhere in there, where I think we need to start looking at budgeting for a full-blown liner replacement on both of these things. These are the originals from, I think, 1983, 1984, I believe. So it's probably time, between the UV and the chemicals and everything else, it's, you know, it's wearing them out. But I think we've got, I think we've got a nice little window of seven to 10 years that we can start to plan for this and, you know, do the full-blown replacement.
Didn't you last year, sorry, Ben?
Yeah, no, I could have sworn that Stan told us that the life on this was 30 years, which would be well past that right now. Can you just make sure of that?
Yeah, so the life he's talking about is a full replacement of the liners. So originally, so that the whole liners probably need to be replaced. We don't know for sure. But when you put in a new liner, you're looking at a 30-year time period on that, because it's brand-new, and it's going to hold up and all that. What we're talking about doing is just up on the upper part of the liners, where the UV is hitting them, that's where it's worn out, and it's kind of thin through there. So that's where we're putting this temporary fix on there, cheap and temporary, that's supposed to last like 10 years. Once we pay the, you know, get the design, I don't even know if we need a design, but once we put in the new liners and do the full-blown project, then we're looking at probably a 30-year turnaround on that. So it's something that we'd have to probably either, you know, get a loan for, or grants, or something to do a full-blown project, and then put the new liners in, and then that buys us 30 years before we are looking at anything on those again. But in the interim, it was decided, because we don't, number one, we don't really have the money at this point. We didn't think it was really necessary yet to do the full-blown replacement, because there's only some kind of localized areas that are starting to wear through, that he got mopped over with this stuff. It's a, I guess it's a thick, I don't know. I'm assuming it's rubberized of some kind, but, so anyway, yeah. I mean, the 30-year time span, the 30 years that you were given is, was if we were going to do a new one. And I think, talking with Stan, originally, the idea was to go below the water line, find a material that you could then put in from the, from below the water line to the top, and that was 30 years of the area that was, was, you know, the higher area, the area that was going to get degraded by the UV or whatever. I don't know if that's what he was talking about, but, but the thought is, is because these things are already past their lifespan, they need to be done. Those lagoons haven't been, the sludge and all that, from my understanding, those lagoons haven't been taken out and cleaned out in a long time as well. So that's going to be a pricey part of this as well, is getting rid of those solids and figuring out what we're going to do with all that. So anyway, I think the 30-year, from my understanding, 30-year is if we, when we have the new liner in place, it's going to have a lifespan of 30 years. The patch and the proposed patch that Stan was talking about, if it was, in fact, a new top section of liner, might have had a 30-year on it as well. But this is, what we're talking about is a need for an entire new liner from the bottom to the top.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember last year Stan talking about needing a whole new liner, that we would need it, and we actually had thought we need to start planning on that and budgeting for it, because it wasn't going to be patched, you know, because otherwise, we're just patching it over and over again. And, and I remember them going in, I think it was last fall, maybe, and cleaning it out. Remember when there was that issue with the blockage from one to the other or something? And they, we got divers in there and everything? Anybody else remember that, or am I dreaming it?
There wasn't any cleaning or anything. That was just, that was the pipe that was running between the two lagoons.
Right.
Yeah.
But the project, if they had cleaned-
But there were divers that went in to fix it.
No.
Yes, of course.
To fix the pipe.
Right, but they were, we sent divers down there to fix it.
Right. So the project, if we were to do the full-blown project, is basically draining one of them down all the way to the bottom. There's who knows how many years of solids in the bottom of that that we would then have to take out. You have to dry it. You have to find a way to dispose of it, which is typically land application, which is fine. But you try to find a farmer or somebody who'll take it, and then there's a lot of testing that goes along with it. So that it's, there's some time involved, and there's a lot of money involved. But then that empties it up, and then you would put the new liner in there and hope that there aren't any spaces underneath the liner, any voids or anything like that that have happened. And then we would go over and flop and do the other one as well, so.
Yeah, I do, we did talk about this, so.
Yeah, if you had, if you had gotten rid of the solids in that thing, you would know it, because you'd have all sorts of-
Oh, no, I didn't say that. I'm just saying, we talked that we needed to put a full new liner in that.
Yeah. I mean, we could continue to put Band-Aids on it, and it'll last for a while, but at some point, you know, it's already past its useful life, which is 30 years.
Yeah.
So we need, I think we've bought a little bit of time here to start planning for the future.
So here's the question asking is originally, we, I mean, the lifespan was 30 years. If that's the case, we're already four years past. When do we really have to start looking at replacing this?
I think we need to do it now. I think now is the time to start planning for it. At some point, the state is going to say, you have to do this.
Yeah.
When they do their sanitary surveys, at some point, I'll look at our sanitary survey and see. A lot of times, the way they do things is they say, we recommend, we recommend, we recommend. And what that really means is you need to do it before we tell you we're not going to recommend anymore. And at some point, the recommendations will then become requirements. So we'll need to look at it, but, but in my professional opinion, I would say that, you know, when we build things and when we buy things, we assume they're going to last a certain amount of time, and it has, which is great. You know, 30 years is good. But I think it's time to at least start the conversation of, you know, how do we plan for this? How do we pay for this? Do we want to, you know, do we want to get a loan for this? We just need to start thinking about it. I think we do, and I can, you know, I can get a ballpark idea of what it's going to cost to do.
I think Stan had that. When we brought this up the last time, Stan had numbers on that.
Okay.
For replacing it.
I'll look through, I'll look through and see if he's got some numbers on it for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were, I mean, he was serious that, you know, he knew that it needed to be replaced, just because of this, you know, shape that it was in. So I just remember talking about it, you know, a couple of meetings at least.
Yes.
Oh, and, and, you know, talking with the guys out there, the, it's not like there are these big giant rips in it or anything like that. It's small little perforations that are in it, and then there's areas where it's just starting to get thin. There's actually two mats. There's a top and a bottom underneath there. So it's getting through the top, and it's starting to get into the bottom, where it's starting to thin out because of the UV mostly. It's not, it's not, to me, it's not immediate. I don't think it's immediate need, but it's definitely something we need to be looking at within the next seven to 10 years.
Well, the turtles were the prior issue.
Get a number.
Wait, 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 one other time. What did you say, Ben?
So Greg, I'm saying, can we please get a number so that we can get it on the list?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you have something to say?
And the last time when Stan came and spoke about it, the issue was not UV. It was the turtles, if you recall. We've replaced and patched multiple times. I can go back and find it and then it's from turtles.
Yes.
Okay. This is $200 to patch this patching stuff that we've done, and it will, it will last a while. If the turtles get to it, then there's small little patches that can be done. That's fine. They have time to do it. It's not going to, I don't think those turtles cause gigantic holes or anything like that. It's just small, you know, little holes here and there that can be patched really easily. And they're all on the, as far as we know, they're all on the part where the, you know, above the water level. So, you know, I, again, this thing is over 30 years old. So I think it is definitely time that we need to have a discussion to get this thing, to get it replaced, for sure.
Yeah.
The turtles, you know, I don't know what we can really do about them, except kind of deal with them as we can, but we definitely do need to start talking about it.
Yes. Would you thank Harry for going the extra mile for us?
Sure, sure. So to follow up on that, they have said that all of the holes and, not holes, but all the areas that they thought needed to be patched have been done. So those are all finished at this point, and they'll continue to watch. They did one of them with, with a, the same material, but it's actually was a tape, and it's probably, it's not really working as well as the roll-on did. So we're going to watch that, and if it needs to come off, they'll, they'll take it off, and they'll, they'll go back and use the other material on it.
Okay.
So that's really all I have, and again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But just kind of wanted to give you a highlight.
Okay.
Oh, I do have one more thing. So I will be bringing, Simon's contract is up October 15th. I believe it's October, it's due up in October. So they have given me a submittal for a three-year and a five-year. And so I will be bringing that to you. We will have an executive session at the next meeting to talk about it. So I'll bring those to you as well as some, I don't know, maybe some, some options that we might have in lieu of them. So, but that'll be, that will be to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, if we're not, just to put it out there too, if you're thinking of not going with them, or just going back out for like an RFP, just to get some other bids from other people, I'm sure there's not too many out there, but, you know, if that was an option that you're thinking of or not.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd like to, you know, discuss it in the executive so that we're not, you know, it is a contract, so I'd like to talk about it in the executive session and-
Right. I'm not talking about the details of the contract.
Yeah, but you know, that is possibly one of the options that we would be discussing. Or all of the above, actually.
Okay.
The paving on West Street, there's no update. It says you haven't heard anything.
No, so with the COVID thing, I think that that's probably, I honestly don't think that's going to happen until next year. I really don't. Even at this point, I actually did just put out a, a bid to do paving on Market Street, trying to get it, you know, our own paving. That's where John thought we would, should do next. We were going to do some milling and paving, with hopes to get that done by the end of October, but it'll probably be a spring thing. And I imagine that West Street is going to be the same way. And I imagine that West Street is going to be the same way. Probably let us know sometime in the in the winter or early spring, and then we'll move forward from there. But we're planning.
Good, West Street's getting a little rough way out on the fire.
Yeah, West is pretty, it is, it is bad. But I think we'll get it. I just think it won't, we won't see it until probably spring. And we'll have it in the budget to, we have that carryover every year, so we're going to carry over.
So as fast as North Street. It's too bad they can't do North Street.
Let's not get to.
You're getting a new bridge.
Yeah, I know, look, three years.
And part of that is going, no, it's supposed to happen in the summer, in the springtime, the bridge. And they have a certain distance from either side that they're going to be repaving. So I'd like to try to tie onto that with another class-two grant as well. And maybe use their contractors because we don't have to pay for mobilization and everything if we do that. So we'll kind of see how that works. Yeah, well, that's just kind of kind of waiting to see.
Okay.
But the bridge is going to go in next year, they say that.
Okay. All right. Are you done with your report now? Does anybody else have any questions? Financial report.
So I finally figured out Stan's spreadsheet, and here it is. I don't really have much to say about this, other than the first, under administration, there's a $28,000 in the red. I'm not sure if anybody saw that. That will go away and be moved somewhere. That's actually what we lost on the tax sales with the tax revenue that we would have seen. That is just, has just been put in there as a placeholder by the the auditors. They've asked us to put that there. So that's eventually going to be figured out and go somewhere else. But there is a loss. There's just no doubt that there was a loss in revenue that we, you know, because we didn't get what we what we were owed on those properties. So I just wanted to put that out there because that was a big red thing out there that, you know, this early in the year, we don't want to see any red lines if we can handle, if we can help it.
Anybody have any questions on anything? The financial report?
When will we have another house sale?
That's a good question. Actually, our delinquent tax collector is working in the office this week, so I'll ask her. I'll ask her how everything's going. Because I, last time we talked and you asked that question, I asked her when it was going to happen again. And she said it didn't look like it was going to be anytime real soon. But again, that's that's been a quarter or two ago, so we'll see where she's at now with it. See what delinquencies look like, look like. I'll find out for you. I'll find out where we're at with lobbies. I think we took care of some of the kind of long-term people, didn't we? Some of the long, long-term accounts with this last tax sale. So I haven't looked at the reports to see where we're at with with the linkacies yet, but I'll find out.
Thank you.
Okay. The Autobahn Society, the request that was mentioned last time to have access to the property up in Chittenden.
Did you guys see the fund? Did you see the fund balance page in there as well? I just wanted to make sure that you saw that.
I'm skipped rid of that, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. This was requested at the last, this was requested at the last meeting. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware it was there. Salt Shed is doing really good.
Yeah.
I hope for a mild winter.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. The the bird people going into the the watershed there, I don't have an issue with that. I would like to see them sign off on some kind of a, we're not responsible.
So I talked with Wade Maser from VLCT about this, and he said, it's simple. It's just a liability waiver. Well, we can, they have a template. So I'll just throw that at them and they'll sign it and we'll be good to go.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to at least get a consensus from everybody if they're comfortable letting the Autobahn do this.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine. Yeah, as long as there's a liability thing, because that road's a
Yeah.
pretty steep.
Right.
I'm in agreement as long as there's a liability waiver.
Okay.
Agreed.
Lisa asked instead of just going up and going on the property.
That was nice of them, yes.
There are extra trails that go across a property.
Yeah. They could have just gone.
Near the top.
Right, right. But they wanted to take the road or park at the bottom and go up that road, I guess, so. I will let them know.
Okay. All right, tax bill penalty.
Yeah, so this is, this is a continuation from our last discussion where I had asked. So we had waived the penalties. I guess it's in, well, would be interest in penalties both due to the COVID and the last quarter of fiscal year 2020. And I needed to find out what the idea was moving forward. Since we are still sort of mired in the middle of this COVID thing, I wanted to find out what's what we were planning on doing moving forward. What I've put together in front of you is fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20, a look at the total delinquents. Now, the numbers are a little bit off because taxes went up, so the numbers could be off. That's why I did a percentage of delinquent, which is a percentage of the total. And if you look in 2019, it was 4%. So so that 119, 119 was 4% of the $3 million, which in 2020, it's 148,000 of 3.2 million, which is 4.6%. So, long story short, the increase in delinquencies in the middle of the COVID in fiscal year 20 has been about half a percent. So I like to make or have a discussion about how long we want to continue to allow for waiving of penalties and fees moving forward into fiscal year 21.
Does anybody have any comments about that feelings about waiving or not?
I would like to stop it soon.
Anybody else? That, I'm in agreement with stopping it soon.
Is it right now, just it's just through this that this next payment, right?
Well, it's not even in this payment yet. It was quarter four of 2020. And so we haven't processed any delinquencies in 21 yet.
Right, but we were going to, where we, we are going to extend it to that, the next payment?
No, no, you, I think what you decided originally was to do just the fourth quarter of 20.
Okay. Anybody else, Bruce, Ben?
It might be nice to take a chance and uncover the first quarter of 21. I think there's a lot of people that are still having, you know, some financial problems and and stop it after that, you know, in the spring of 21. Just a thought.
So Bruce, you're thinking of the first quarter of 21?
Yeah. I, I must be lost. I thought it was. I didn't think we went that far.
No, so originally, it was, I think the discussion was that you were going to waive the all these penalties and things for the fourth quarter of 2020.
Right.
Now we're in the first quarter of 2021, and I need to know what direction we're going now.
Right, right. I, I'm in favor of ending them now, you know.
I agree.
I agree too. I feel that it puts us in a situation financially as a town to not do it. People are, my feeling is that gives more time and we have to make our budget.
So, well, I can't, I was going to give you a number, but I can't give you a real great number, sorry. Our total interest penalty for 2000 for fiscal year 2020 was 7,300. So you figure, let's just for for first assumptions here, let's just say that a quarter of that, that's about what we would have would have forgiven or whatever, is a quarter of $7,300, which is about, what, 20, $1,800?
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
I could live with forgiving it the first quarter, you know, right now of this fiscal year.
Well, we, it was going to be the last quarter, correct?
You've already established it's the last quarter of 20. Now we need to move forward.
Right.
We're in the first quarter.
Now, are you saying you'd extend it for another first quarter? Or no?
Yes, I believe we're in 21 right now, correct?
We are.
Right.
You know, I could live with extending it to the first quarter of 21, but I wouldn't want to go more than that.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
So if they're not paid by the second quarter, that means they get interest from that part forward? Is that what you're thinking?
It would have to pay, correct?
Yeah, I think in the fourth quarter, what you did was, I think it was forgiven. So those numbers were just sort of, you know, absorbed by the general fund, basically. I think that was my understanding. If I'm wrong, let me know. But I think that was the idea, was that basically they weren't even really sort of being charged.
Right.
That was my understanding, yes.
And and so now there's talk that possibly extending it this other, this next, this quarter, and then we'll pick up the second quarter and start charging them.
Yeah.
Correct?
Right.
So what does everybody feel about that? Are you still, are you still hung on ending it now?
No, I could go with the first quarter, waiving it. How's everybody else?
Ben, are you ready?
Yeah, I think it would be the fairest thing. People are having some rough problems still.
I wouldn't want to go beyond this quarter, but I could, I could deal with this quarter.
I guess I'm in agreement, but not beyond this quarter. So if it gets worse, then it's
Right.
pay on time or pay interest. And this is slated to get worse. So that, I guess that's my thoughts on that. I'd be okay, but we don't know what it's going to be like in November. It could be better, it could be worse.
There isn't going to be a lot of state money around, that's for sure.
No.
Right, I mean, the CARES Act is kind of tapping out.
Well, I guess my point is I don't mind going until November, but I don't want to make a decision beyond that until we know exactly what's going on.
Right. All right, so I'm just throwing this out there because then you're going to find out. If come November, it's bad again, and if it's worse, then you're going to keep extending it for another quarter and another quarter and.
And that's my thought too. And a lot of people have their taxes included in their mortgage. So it's not as big of a problem as we would think.
I mean, the way I look at it is when I look at these delinquencies, it's the same people not paying their tax bill before COVID as now. So COVID didn't impact us hardly at all. It's people just being negligent and not paying their taxes for whatever reason.
You got it.
So let's, let's not waive it, and if they really need to, they can go to the board of abatement.
That's what I was thinking, instead of waiving it, maybe making it a case-by-case.
So are you going to make a motion?
Is there a motion to cease the forgiveness? And just had it through that one quarter, the fourth quarter of last year? And from now on, we start charging them and do them on a case-by-case basis?
So moved.
I'll second that. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So let me just clarify. So penalty forgiveness has, it basically stops after fiscal year 20. Fiscal year 21, there is no forgiveness. And if somebody has to, has an issue with their taxes or whatever, there's, we'll go the normal channels with them.
Right, on a case-by-case basis.
On a case-by-case basis, they can, yeah, they can go to the board of abatement or whatever.
Yeah, right.
Moving forward, there, in this current, the current quarter and moving forward, there will be no forgiveness.
Right.
So why don't you put a date with the motion to end penalty forgiveness, July 1st, 2020?
Yeah, or June 30th, yeah.
Yeah, by the first quarter started, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The end of the fourth quarter, which is June 30th, okay. Bruce, were you a yes or a no, just for the record?
Just to be different, I'll say no.
Okay, thank you. It's good to be different. All right. Ah, let's see. Okay. It's getting darker in here as the time goes on. Um, annual financial self-audit questionnaire?
So this is just a little bit of housekeeping. This is something that Celia does every year. It's required. Really, it just says, I mean, it's just us checking ourselves to make sure that we're doing financially the things that we should be doing and that we have things in place that need to be in place. I don't know why this like we're necessarily has to sign it, but they do. So this is something that happens every year.
So with that, did you happen to find out any information on the fraud assessment that was done over the spring?
I did and I didn't. I looked for it and looked for it, looked for it and could not find it. And then I got with John, and he said, oh, yeah, I have that. I'm going to get with that. And so we will be looking at it, and I'll probably bring it to the next meeting. I couldn't find anything because you said there was a whole committee and all kinds of stuff. And I couldn't find, I couldn't find anything. But John said, oh, yeah, I remember all that stuff. So I'll get with him and we'll, we'll figure out what we're supposed to be doing here.
Yeah, there was a whole committee on that, and that's interesting that. And I'm trying to remember who we met with. Somebody, some accountant.
Right.
Yeah, regular.
And again, it's, it's the way Stan, he had everything. So it's not like he didn't have it. I just have to find it. And I looked at every different direction I could, and I couldn't find it. But I'll get there. I'll get there eventually, but I'll revisit that again and talk to John, and we'll, we'll see what that was all about and what we need to do.
You need a decoder, stand decoder.
I know, I know. Well, I think about 80% of the time, I think the way he did, so I can find it. But then there's some things that he named it something really weird, and even a search doesn't find it. So, but it's all there, it's there.
Hey, animal orders rewrite. Anybody have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Any, any suggestions or comments on it?
Just one thing jumped out at me, the definition of a leash is not in the new.
Ah, I knew I was forgetting something, thank you.
We appreciate you doing this. The old definition was eight foot in length. Our sidewalks are four foot, our new sidewalks are five feet. I see people walking on South Street with dogs on, it looks like a 50-foot retractable leash. If the dog ran out on the road, it'd be boom, boom. And, you know, I'd like to see our leash, a definition for leash put back in and shortened up to four feet or five feet or something.
Isn't that what we talked about? I knew I was forgetting something. Was it, did we talk about four or five, or do you want to make that decision now and I can put it in?
Whatever.
So you're going to tell people they can't use retractable leashes?
Well, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying legally, if something happens, the dog gets run over or it bites somebody and the dog is beyond the four or five feet, whatever the definition calls for, then it's their problem.
Okay, so they should keep it to that minimum.
Well, when you're passing people on the sidewalk, I don't see that you need to have your dog on a 25 Well, when you're asking people on the sidewalk, I don't see that you need to have your dog on a 25-foot retractable leash. It should be drawn back in and have the dog under your control.
And I also thought perhaps under definitions, if we should put vicious under there too. Because it starts off with all definitions and then just maybe, and then it goes into the vicious dogs later. But if we describe under definitions what vicious is.
Okay.
Under the old ordinance, it was Article 2, Section 7. There was a definition for domestic vicious domestic animal.
Right, and there is in here too. But what I'm saying is they define, you know, dog and a domestic animal. And, you know, I just thought it might be a good preempt to the actual article, like to say what they consider vicious.
Okay, I can do that. That won't take me that long. How about the the fine scale? How about looking at the money part?
I kind of thought the fines were a little high just because of weird circumstances that could happen. Like if your dog just got out of your fence and ran down the road, then it's a $75 fine. That just seems kind of steep.
Well, usually the practice of the sheriff is that they don't give any ticket or any fine the first time or the second time. So my thought is by the time they do it, it's the third time and it should hurt. So it doesn't happen again the fourth time.
So what do you, what do you guys think about kind of, and I know it's kind of, I want to get this done as soon as possible. But I also feel that maybe the Sheriff's Department or somebody from the Sheriff's Department should also be here because a lot of this is on them. And it might be a good idea to have them present to say, what are you willing to do? What can you do so that we don't rate this ordinance? And then we have to go back to them saying, you're not doing your job. You know what I mean?
So and and this is why I said we need an animal control officer because the sheriff is not really, or any police is not really an animal control officer. That's not something that they like to do, period. They have bigger fish to fry.
Right. But if we wrap it into the ordinance, I think, and and make them, you know, responsible for that and they have buy into this, then I think it might be more, hopefully more successful.
I don't know. I think you can ask them, but I don't think that you're going to get them to buy into it.
A few years ago, the planning commission looked into and just an animal control officer. Some towns do. We contacted a few of those people. They weren't interested in doing proctor at all. It's, we're kind of stuck with the sheriff doing it.
Yeah. And by statute, your constable, if you have a constable that's able to do it, be your dog control officer. I don't know if that's a thought is, I mean, I know when I say constable, people are grinning right now. But, you know, a constable can actually have an assistant constable as well. And that could be somebody that's a little bit more able to perform some of the duties of a a dog control officer.
I also think it's who's on duty, you know? Like if if you have one officer always on duty, it'd be easier to kind of wrap them into this and say, you know, here's, you know, and some of them are great, I think about it. And then others are a little bit more lax.
I don't know. We haven't seen a ticket go out for any of these, period, since I've been on the board. I have not recalled one single ticket and then being called to several things.
Right, and I'm not talking the ticket piece. I'm more like coming and picking up a dog that is stray and bringing it to the pound. That's what I've seen that they have done, so.
Yeah, I think we looked into that and talked with them. And they had one at one time, but then the the Sheriff's Department did away with it. So I think it's very hard to find an animal control officer. We, Tom said the planning commission talked with some people and they weren't interested in it. So I think unless you're a big city thing, I don't think you're going to find one that we could, we could get or we could afford.
So you can invite the sheriff, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere. And this is why I felt that spending time on this was kind of wasteful because I don't think it's going to come to anything. Think we're just we're just stuck where we are and nothing's going to change. That's how I feel about it right now.
I think we, the board, needs to hold their feet to the fire once in a while.
So is there, is there any other changes to this? Do you want to, oh, Lisa?
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
I see in Section 9, the complaint, you've kind of taken the Sheriff's Department off the hook and put the onus on the person who was attacked with filing the complaint. And I'm curious why that is. And the second piece is, it appeared at the last meeting, a large percentage of the issue is the procedure and how, what the expectation is to operate from or once the complaint is taken. I felt like the officer said multiple times, well, it's my first one, so I'm just kind of like, you know, getting my feet wet. And I'm curious if that's an issue, if it wouldn't be helpful to include the procedure within the ordinance. If you adopt a policy, you can have a procedure that tells you how to how you follow that. So every time you have a hearing, you're not using a different procedure to go forward. But I'm just wondering why the Sheriff's Department is kind of taken off the hook for filing the the complaint.
I think I didn't mention who because we still were talking about who. And I think in one place it also does say that it could be the town manager, the health officer, or the sheriff because a complaint is a complaint.
So here, so basically, the the person who was attacked or bitten or their dog was attacked can file the complaint with the town or them reporting it to the police officer, the sheriff. He can, that's the complaint filed there.
The health officer, the town manager, the the town manager, the health officer, or the sheriff.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure it states that in one section, so maybe I need to put that in more than one section. And and I I agree that maybe that a procedure should be spelled out more clearly.
Yeah, because sometimes you read through all these ordinances and they're all like this, you know? You've got to read through them five times before you go, okay, what am I supposed to do? Whereas if you have step one, two, three, four, five, I think it'd be better. Then you can put it in front of the sheriff and say, this is the process. This is what you need to follow. Because that last officer, you know, he was the same officer who got the first attack. So he definitely should have known this is a second one. I need to ticket them, you know, I need to do something. So I I think kind of, you know, hanging out there and saying, listen, we, you know, we have you guys as a service and we'd like you just to be a little bit more stringent, especially when the dog is involved in biting somebody, more so than just loose.
The biting and the loose is our, are problems that we continue to have. And I think that we need to be a little more strict. I think the sheriff said, little lenient, I do realize it's paperwork. But I think you're right about that and I can totally change those two definitions. And then I I think the procedure part is a fantastic piece.
Okay. So do you want to take a stab at that and then email us all? And then are you guys good holding up till the next meeting to approve this?
Yes.
And do you want to bring the sheriff in at that time to say, here's our ordinance? Here's what we're, what we're, you know, we're making a motion to approve and we need your support in this? Because you're a big, you know, I I mean, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want like a job description where I'm liable for everything and I'm not part of the process, you know? And all of a sudden I realize, oh, this is what I have to do. So I just think maybe if we tell them directly, this is what's in this and this is what you're responsible for. I mean, it it wouldn't hurt, right?
So here's my thought on that. I don't think it hurts, but maybe it could be, you know, once I send it, maybe it could be passed on to the sheriff and we could get their input and then ask them if they want to come to the next meeting or if they just want to give us input or feedback.
Okay, all right.
Can I put my two cents in?
Absolutely.
I see here you have, under penalties and costs, you have a penalty for disturbing the peace. And I wonder if, I don't see anywhere within the document where it really defines what is disturbing the peace.
Okay.
Would it be in our best interest to have that a little bit? I mean, I know you can't put everything that happens, but, you know, maybe define what some of the the typical disturbing the peace things might be. I don't know.
Okay, I can absolutely do that. And absolutely, if people see other parts, email them to me. And then I can, I can have this ready hopefully by the next meeting.
Okay.
So it'll all help and then.
I think you addressed the disturbing the peace when you go, when you have it under Section 4. You do define what disturbing the peace is, so, you know, as far as parking and.
I can always put in there, see Section 4 for definition. So it points people to the right place.
Okay.
Well, and maybe, maybe that covers it though. I mean, that might do it. Yeah, so maybe that covers it. I didn't see that before, so you're already good.
All right, everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. And no parking ordinance, right, at this meeting?
And I apologize, I thought I had sent it out last week and apparently I didn't. And I got to go back through my stuff.
Okay, so we'll put it on next agenda?
It'll, I'll get it out within the next day or two.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything new or old business anybody wants to address?
I have old business. So last meeting, we talked about Beaver Pond and you had checked with Wade on the float.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, so just, I got an email today from Wade Messer. I haven't even really read through it too much because it's kind of long. But I think it's, it gives us three options or three recommendations. And I will bring that to you at the next meeting and we could talk about which way you'd like to go with that. I think they recommend either don't allow anything, some sort of a permit. And then I think there was another, a third one that I don't remember what it was.
I actually got email from Wade because I work with Wade. And I did get the email and there were three bullets. And basically, he said, not allow the practice at all and keep the shoreline free of all watercraft when not in use. Establish a system that would allow, it may be the form of a permit system with conditions as part of the permit or establish a launch area for controlling watercraft for purposes of entering and exiting the pond and adopt a resolution that names all boat, raft owners, users, assume liability and risk for their watercraft when they're left.
So I will, I will bring that to you at the next meeting and you can discuss which direction you'd like to go.
Okay, so I'd like to kind of, I think Beaver Pond meeting should also be included because if we're going to maybe entertain the third one, I think it is about having a launch, maybe we should talk about the Beaver Pond meeting because we're talking about a different dock, a new dock in a different location.
Right.
So that would mean that we would have to look at a different kind of dock possibly.
Well, they can bring the boats off that off that landing now. People would bring boats there and then they also bring them to the other side of the pond.
Right, I understand that. I understand that.
Yeah.
And and right now, nobody has anything on on there except for the stuff on the side, which is in town right away.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know how anybody feels about Beaver Pond Committee being involved, at least them having a discussion. I mean, they don't have final say, but.
Right, I'm fine with them. Or even if like, you know, the chair, Ray wanted to, you know, just to have their input. I mean, they've done a lot to make it accessible for us all, so. I think it'd be good.
Tom, do you think, Tom, are we going to have, is there going to be a meeting before? When's the next Beaver Pond meeting?
I'm not sure. There's one coming up in September. Carrie, would you know?
I think it's the first Wednesday in September and I thought Ray was going to do that. But I can, I could check with him, we could check with him Saturday.
Okay, maybe we can bring it up at that point because I do the agenda for it. I can put it on the agenda to discuss and see what they have for ideas.
What are their thoughts? I mean, I know what my thoughts are, but I'm open to to what others have to say about it.
Okay. I'll get with him and find out if he's planning on having a meeting. And if he is, we'll put on the agenda.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, anything else anybody has to add?
Debris in the road. It's happened again.
Yes.
The town crew had to go up and clean it up.
Oh, up and across the hill?
Yes, I am sick of paying our town crew to go up and clean up.
Yes.
A mess.
This gone on for two or three years now.
Well, certainly gone on this summer, that's for sure.
So I, the only thing I found that we can use for that is state statute, which is good. There is a state statute that talks about protection of highways and that you're not allowed to drag wood and other debris and other debris and things like that into the road. I can send a letter out that states that and it will reference those state statute sections. I'll have to look and see exactly what the regulatory or, you know, what the enforcement part of it looks like. But if it's, actually, if it's state statute, it most likely would come from the sheriff.
So Stan has already sent them a letter with that state statute. But I thought we were also mailing out that state statute and the white.
We are doing that. I have to get those, so when Stan got the original pamphlets, there were like six different pamphlets. And when he got the first ones or the only ones we have, they were all given out free. And that that one actually only talks about like yard chemicals and things like that. So, you know, don't put chemicals on your yard because it gets into the water system and stuff. The ones for the the rags and all that, I called the company and tried to get them to send us some more free ones because we had like, we were trying to get like 800 of them and they won't, they won't do it. So I was looking into finding out how much it was going to cost to have 800 of these things printed. It'd actually be 1,600 because we'd have to get some for grass clippings as well. I'll need some for grass clippings and then I'll do the one for the rags. But we're going to have to print them ourselves.
Right, I want the, I think the state statute should be more than grass clippings, in my opinion. It should be leaves and snow and grass and.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there. Sure. We, and yeah, we'll, we'll have to make, kind of build our own, I guess, on that one. The other one's already made, they're already pre-made. There's a company that did a bunch of them in Vermont. The one about the rags, that's already pre-made. I just have to, I was hoping to get them to give them to us and they don't have anymore. So we have to print those ourselves now. And there's like 800 of them. So and then the other one, we'll have to figure out, because there is a, every year, V-Trans does a little flyer thing about snow in the right of way that we can typically link to and put that on our own website. So I might be able to utilize something like that and put that together with the grass clippings and all that kind of thing too. Because they are separate statutes. One is snow removal, one is actually a protection. You know, if you read into it, it's really more about logging, but I think it would work in this situation as well. It's more about people dragging logs across the road. But it does say debris and things like that. So I think we're okay. It's a little bit of a stretch, but I think we'll be okay. But I could put all that together and we'll, we're working on the flyers. It's just a matter of that one, we have to build it from scratch. And I'm not very good at that kind of stuff. I'm not real, I don't know. That don't make good flyers, but. So what I'm going to do is find out how much it's going to cost, how much it's going to cost to print 1,600 of these flyers, eight of each. And I'll come to you with that number and, you know, hopefully it's not, not too high. Last time, like I said, Stan got them for free and now the companies, they're out of them. They don't have any more at all of any of them.
I think the issue though is this particular residence is such a repeat offender.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to do, that's not going to do a bit of good with him.
No, but the problem, and here's my problem with it. I understand he's a repeat offender and he's been complained about, but there are lots of other people. And he's going to come back and say, hey, other people are doing. And he's gonna come back and say, hey, other people are doing it and I don't see you harassing them about it. So I was just trying to weigh on caution and cover our bases so that we don't have this issue that's gonna boil over.
So everyone's unnoticed, so to speak.
Yeah.
So you kind of want to do that kind of passive, the passive attempt of just to put the flyers out there first, let everybody know, hey, don't do it, and then now you're kind of, you know, you're on watch now.
You could probably tell these other handful of people not to and they won't do it again, you're not gonna get him.
Right, and, and that's why I, I had a couple and I asked John, uh, asked Ray or Stan. And John went and talked to him and that was fine. But just to get the word out that, hey, you know, you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I will. Go back up there.
So we're not like pointing at one person.
Right.
We have a question.
Yeah.
Can't you just, um, put your flyer together, publish it in the paper, put it on the website, post it at three places as starting point? That way you've covered, you've given public notice. If they're repeat offenders, copy that and send that to them as fair warning. It, you, nothing says that you can't send that to them once you've published it the way you say all public notices should be published.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, but I think originally the idea was just to do sort of a PSA, get it out to everybody, right? And the flyers, if we want to go away from that and go the other direction, I can do that as well. It's whatever you want.
Well, I think Lisa was saying that this is more immediate and can be done quicker and cheaper until we find somebody who's willing to do it for nothing again.
Yeah, I think whatever's faster is the point, and I think Lisa's got a good point.
Especially now, because it's gonna be, you know, people are gonna be blowing leaves and snowing, throwing snow out there.
I don't want to spend money on flyers. Uh, we, you know, we don't make enough use of our websites here. Our, you know, the Town of Kinnate, the Town of Proctor website, Facebook page, uh, we need to use those more.
Yeah, because people go on them a lot.
Yeah. So I, I think in the interim, that's a great idea. Let's see, let's see what kind of compliance we get with that. And then you can always just send offenders that continue to offend the letter once.
Yeah.
He's been warned. You know, we'll be shoveling snow, you know, pretty soon.
You could also send it to the schools, we're pretty good about tagging on things at the bottom of newsletters also. So if you wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, I can, I'll get that, we'll get that put together and get that out.
Perfect.
We have had taxpayers complaining and, and we haven't done anything.
Okay, anybody have anything else? There are motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So moved.
I always wait for Ben.
Bruce, not quick. Bruce, you second it?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie, meeting adjourned, thanks.